Good afternoon and welcome to the City of Helena City, I mean Administrative Meeting, March twenty second, twenty twenty-three four P M. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
Assistant City Attorney Hockeluck.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shertlet.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here. Thank you. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Administrative Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in a citizen's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary during the meeting. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage in your participation. Commissioners, comments, questions? Discussion. Okay, Committee Discussion Resolution Recreating the Helena Public Arts Committee. Clerk. Clayborne, you have the floor.
Uh, Mayor, Commissioners, as you well know, at this stage, we are uh, working through a process where we are reviewing the resolutions that establish your general advisory boards and committees. We have previously reviewed the Citizens Conservation Board um and gone through that process. Uh, the Helena Public Arts Committee was identified uh internally as the next most appropriate board to review in this process, their resolution. Um, within those resolutions, we're adopting policies that were dictated by you during the February twenty twenty-one uh Administrative Meeting where we talked about um creating consistency amongst the boards and committees um and certain policies such as terms and term limits. Um, there have been other policies identified such as a pilot program to engage youth on the committees. So uh with that, I'm here to answer any questions. The resolution was available in your packet. I'm here to answer any questions as well as the staff liaisons that uh work directly with the board.
Okay. Commissioners.
Mr. Mayor, maybe just really briefly, um, I believe that H Mac did get an opportunity to hear about some of the updates when you when you report on some of their feedback.
Um, sure, um, Mayor, Commissioner Dean, I I wasn't at the meeting where that report was given directly to uh the committee, but uh Bridget Johnson from Community Facilities that works with the board is here. Maybe she can speak to that.
Hi Ken, um, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, it was a very brief discussion with the board. We did presentation with the resolution. They had a couple of questions. One was if the youth number was defined. We did tell them that that would be forthcoming in your policy. And um, I think that was the only question, the feedback seemed positive. Um, they liked the idea of um, the new process.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the uh Commission? We have been to public comments. Are you done, Madam Clerk? You have any online?
I do have one hand raised. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, uh, before we move on to public comment, I would just ask for consensus direction. From you all tonight, uh, following public comment that we put this on the next available regular meeting agenda for formal adoption.
Ben, I don't have a problem with that. It's true. Okay, is that public comment for this topic?
Um, actually, I apologize, Mr. Mayor, the hand has been lowered.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else, Madam Clerk?
Uh, not at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Recommendations from Helena Citizens Council, Representative Beak. You have the floor.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Patricia Bick is online. I've given her her mic.
Okay, thank you.
There we are. Sorry. Had a little trouble setting that up. We have no report from the City Committee, I mean, from the Citizens Council tonight, but thank you very much.
Thank you. City Managers Report.
Mary, just wanna set the stage because we'll probably, because the budget season is upon us, be asking for a special meeting or two. I don't think we've turned anything up that we would coordinate with uh the Clerk's Office and my office to see what we could uh schedule and accommodate everybody's time. Um. We will be starting on the fourth with the Joint City County Meeting, uh, a potential special meeting on the twelfth. Uh, then the nineteenth, the third, uh, would be regular administrative meetings dedicated primarily to the budget. Perhaps a special meeting on the tenth. And then a meeting on the seventeenth, and I think hopefully at that point, then we'd be able to if we needed to have another meeting or bring it across the hallway, we could do so. Um, just to give you an idea on the type of workload that's stacking up. Uh, and this is not an all-inclusive list, but it's just to give you an idea. Um, we have uh the tree protection policy that coming your way that we talked about. An update on open, open lands, major projects for twenty twenty-three. Code revision on animal control. Mary, you brought that forward some time ago, but that's ready for consideration. Uh, service line program, uh, consideration for the city. Uh, livable cities program through A A R P, urban forest renewal on the district. Um, consideration of naming Eric Fever Trail up in Mount Helena. Uh, federal grant review overall holistic review. Parkland annexations which are teed up and will be coming your way for consideration. Uh, an update of the Emergency Operations Plan. A review of the Commission stipend and pay and consideration of updating that resolution, which has not happened in quite some time. Uh, consideration of setting aside some time for a Commission strategic plan. We have the Fire Minister Plan coming forward in full body. The Police Staffing Study, uh, which will be coming forward. We've got ongoing issues that will eventually make their way to the Commission in terms of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the long-term uh transportation plan. Uh, the Joint City County Solid Waste Plan. And as part of the budget, but it will be a process um consideration to develop a sustainability plan for the city of Helena as well. And as I've said, you probably all have other items. This is not an all-inclusive list. But it just kind of demonstrates through the budget process, I'm also gonna try to be bringing a few of these items forward so that we can keep them moving rather than just stop all business while we're considering the budget. So that's actually quite a workload. Uh, we'll try to keep it within, you know, reasonable timeframes with our sec meetings, but we'll probably be trying to coordinate through the Clerk's Office a couple of special meetings to move it along as well. That's all I've got, Ben.
Yes, please go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and uh Manager Burton. Two questions. If, could you either send us those proposed dates? Or can you repeat them?
I, we will send them to you.
Okay, that would be great.
And now the regular administrative meetings beginning on the fourth. The two dates that would be special meetings.
Yes.
And I think this is just, we're throwing it out there right now, right?
That's right. The sooner the better.
April twelfth would be a special meeting and May tenth would be a special meeting. At least to start the discussion. And if that doesn't work, then we would try to figure out something.
Thank you. And then just the other question slash comment um with regard to the priorities, you mentioned strategic planning for the Commission. If there was any opportunity to have even a preliminary brief discussion about priorities uh prior to budget decisions. We talk a lot about budget reflecting priorities, but we've not had the opportunity as a Commission of five um people to say what our priorities are even at the most superficial level. So if there was any opportunity to have some kind of a discussion prior to the heavy budget sessions, I think that might be helpful um to be coming at it from some sort of common ground. Thanks.
Yeah, you're right. I think that opportunity would be right at the front end of the budget. Uh, where we talk about general budget projections and and then that would be the perfect opportunity for the Commission to talk about priorities. Just to let you know that from a staff perspective, building off of last year's budgets, priorities that that were moving forward are solidified the improvements that we made relative to city participation, health insurance costs last year for our employees. And then trying to figure out, uh, and it's a little early, but trying to figure out what what kind of a cost living increase we can give the city employees. Beyond that, um, that's the only thing we're really focused on other than laying budget and pretty new wall for decisions.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, one thing I think that might be helpful when we have the start kind of that general discussion. Um, and we haven't necessarily done this on the front end. We normally do it on the back end, but we haven't had any rate increases, so it, it, there wasn't as much need, but I think it would be maybe helpful just to kind of frame um the conversation and give some context of some of the items that we really are gonna have to be making some hard decisions on and determining whether that be uh, we're about to have the sidewalk something, so is when we come out of that, if we have any decisions about funding mechanisms like districts or, you know, other funds, et cetera, um, with the the fire master plan is gonna be coming to us, but does that look like we are going out for, you know, a bond and a levy? Um, the police staffing study. Are, do we need to consider a levy? Um, and then on top of that, some of these other broader priorities that we have maybe had more wiggle room in our budget in previous years, but now that you know, we are a year and a half into inflation at pretty high levels, what does that look like on top of this um being at the market rates? So I think if we could talk about some of the revenue piece um at the front end instead of the back end, that might be helpful.
Yes, and you'll have an overview, Mayor, from me. You'll have an overview particular general fund, but each and every fund on revenues and spending projections. I can tell you what's teed up right now for at least initial discussions on changes in rates. You've already dealt with the golf course. Uh, the Civic Center will be coming your way for consideration, as will the park and recreation things and like you say, they have not been considered for some time. Uh, and there's no question that we have to have a pretty serious discussion within the solid waste division as well. Now, there are others, but I can tell you that at staff level right now, those three that are kind of teed up for consideration.
And one more comment, sorry. I think hopefully that will have a much better idea about what the legislature is doing because they are, I mean, tomorrow, there is a bill that could cut our, our part of our revenue by like eight, nine percent. Um, so that, and that doesn't even talk about being able to go out for levies and uh changes to TIFs, et cetera. So I think obviously wait until somebody die, but once, once the session's over, I think that would start moving on, on that piece.
Very good. We'll be prepared for that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, uh, Commissioner Dean talked to a couple of things as you were talking about the workload that uh I think are of interest to me and 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 the timeline of the year, like, as we look at the Fire Master Plan and the Police Staffing Study, there's potential for needing to go to the public. And, you know, whether we have time to consider that prior to this fall, I mean, I, I guess if, if that was a potential, I just, I'd assume discuss those issues pretty soon, um, if, if possible. Uh, so as you were talking about your workload, those were a couple of things that came up. For the most for me, and then, and then one totally unrelated sort of request is, uh, I, I'm still hearing a fair bit from uh, some of the neighborhood at Rodney Street and I, I know the project's not completed. If, if I'm understanding things correctly, and um, I, I think I'd be interested in maybe somehow getting updated on, you know, what, where what's left in the project and, and, and I know the neighborhood would as well, um, you know, getting periodic updates on that. I, I really be interested in that. Uh, just keep up with all of what's going.
Mayor, I'll just throw this out, uh, if I may, and you know, this is an ongoing list of several months worked where we're bringing, going to be bringing policy level discussions forward. Um, at this point, I'm doing my best to guess what the priorities of the Commission are. Maybe we can take a little bit of time and look at this list and have a discussion amongst the Commission and say, okay, let's pick, let's pick the top ten. And we could tee them up in more of a Commission priority sense for consideration as well. Um, it's gonna take us a while to get through this list and we'll be adding to the list as we go down the road, which is normal. Um, but we also have to spend some pretty good time on budget process and so, and how we can marry some of these issues with the budget process would be important also. So let's see if we can figure out at the staff level, if you have some discussion like that based on this list and if I omit anything, just let me can all, just email me or give me a call. You know, add it to the list.
Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you. Uh, Manager Burton, what is the process for public engagement like this or public comment with regards to the budget process? For setting those priorities or moving forward, or do we wait until later on to get there?
These are, uh, Mayor and Commissioner, these are issues that are at the very front end of any consideration, so we'll develop uh, the information for your consideration, uh, but it, it goes through the regular public process, the budget process. If these are separate items, the same public process, yeah, so nothing's unique in that regard.
At least one final thing, Mayor. I think it'd be helpful, um, and I'm sure this is already gonna happen, but uh, in the past, we've put up once the city manager brings the preliminary budget, we have put some of those, um, the preliminary budget and some of the budget and um summary documents on our website, um, so that they're in one spot instead of in multiple agendas. Um, I think that might be helpful if we were able to do that again. Maybe it is just on the Commission tab, um. But I know sometimes it gets a little confusing for folks when they don't know which agenda. Um, some of the budget documents are on.
Yeah, I, I think if the workforce worked for you guys last, we can do it the same way or length.
Any other commission questions from the Commission? If not, are you done, Mr. Man?
I am.
Thank you. Presentation. Opera and General Saving and General Fund Savings Update. Update. Uh, Administrator Opitz and Finance Director Daniel Sill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Uh, we'll be brief today, um, anticipating that you'll want some time for discussion.
No.
Um. We'll go through where we are to date in terms of our, our numbers and allocations. So, um, as you know, uh, in the last few years, we've received um eight point four six million dollars uh in change um from the U S Treasury, which created uh savings in the general fund to that same amount. Um, we've allocated uh to the Ten Mile Water Treatment Project, one point eight million dollars. An additional one point eight and change uh was uh brought by the city manager and uh adopted by the Commission for some internal projects, the Civic Center HVAC system, the CAD RMS system, so that's computer-aided dispatch and records management system for uh police and fire. Um, the Mount Helena Radio Building replacement, which we split with the county, as well as the Law and Justice Center second floor remodel, which we also split with the county. Um, and additional funding for the new ERP system, which is our finance uh brain system that we use here at the city. The Commission also allocated a contingency of one point six million dollars. Uh, later, the Commission was able to provide some input on internal projects that they would like to see funded. Uh, those projects included the Grand Street Theater roof replacement, the Type Six Wildland Fire Truck replacement, Centennial Trail Repair and Paving Henderson Pedestrian Bridge feasibility and partial design, and that was for four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. At the last full City Commission meeting, um, based on information that we received after the insurance settlement came for that wildland fire truck, we rescinded a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars of the original two hundred that had been allocated to the wildland Type Six Fire Truck uh back to the city coffers. Um, so that forty, additional forty-seven thousand dollars covered uh new equipment for the replaced truck, the insurance covered. And the Commission allocated um one million nine hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars to external projects that were brought to the Commission through the community aid grant process. Those three projects included the R D M R's housing project, the Community Food Resource Center, and a wildland risk and assessment education uh programs from Tri-County Fire. And that leaves us with nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand and nine hundred dollars left yet to allocate. Um, a reminder on some uh uh pending internal requests that came before the Commission uh back at the beginning of February. Uh, there is a project for the Memorial Park um ice skating rink warming house study for fifteen thousand dollars as well as an offer from the county that came to split costs uh related to F Y capital infusion for the Law and Justice Center uh for two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, five hundred. Uh, so that total is, uh, excuse me, if that were allocated uh today or uh consensus today for voting later, um, that would leave that total at seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred. Um, and lastly, just to delve in a little bit deeper into the allocations that were just made via the community aid grants. Um, last Monday, uh, one hundred, excuse me, one million five hundred and eighty thousand dollars was allocated to the R D M R's housing project. Tri-County Fire Safe Working Group received one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for their uh well wildfire risk assessment program. Food share received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh for the Community Food Resource Center. And then again, that forty-seven thousand dollars was allocated internally for the fire truck. So, remaining from the community aid grant, um, requests that originally came through the application process. Uh, still on the docket, we have the Warren Nelson Stadium enhancements from Carroll College for seven hundred thousand dollars. The Sustainable Sustainability Study for a new recreation center brought by the Helena Regional Sports Authority for sixty-four thousand dollars. United Way of Los Clark County has a request for four hundred thousand dollars for meal and hygiene uh mobile units. And Family Promise has a client services building slash emergency shelter request for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. At that point, well, you've got all the numbers. Um, we're now at the point where if you'd like to make additional um allocations, this is your moment to discuss those. Um. If you have, if you need additional information from any of our applicants or anything along those lines, we could also arrange that.
Thank you, um, Commissioner Opitz. Comments or questions from the Commission? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, thanks. Um, so one of the things I would like to put forward maybe for the Commission to consider is I know that we're waiting on um some information regarding the um more mature trees that Commissioner Logan had previously brought up for Rodney Street. Um, and then I heard from a few folks in the community and it sounds like other members of the Commission have heard as well, um, regarding the Trail Rider Shuttle. Um, uh, and, and renewing that project from what I've been able to gather and recall, the city had um donated um, two vehicles to the TBID for that program in two thousand and eighteen um, for, for the TBID to um continue to do um that program and then um there was a outside vendor that was doing it and now it looks like no one is doing it. So I, I think it would be helpful if we got some information, um, about where TBID is on that program, where the vehicles are. Um, and maybe why, why they're not being used. Um, and then a dollar amount, if that's something that um, is not currently, i- is not going to be in the, in TBID's presented budget this year, because I would expect that they're probably getting close to having their budget numbers ready for our consideration as well. Um, but I think that would be really helpful to have that information. Um. And then the last request I would maybe have, Mr. Mayor, is um if maybe we can do what we had considered or had done before of um everyone send any other like request to the city manager and Amanda. Um, and then I think what would be super helpful is if we could get them consolidated like this and then come back at the next ARPA meeting for the discussion that people are maybe made, ready to make some decisions. They can do so, but I know for me, that would be really helpful if I had a better idea as to where we are numbers-wise, um, on, on what's anything new that's being considered or adjustments after that money that we've already allocated. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the Commission? Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have a question uh with regard to Commissioner Dean's points. Are we saying that we're opening a backup for all sorts of new ideas, or are we, I, I guess I'm confused about what we would be considering because we're new things keep coming in. We had the original seven, so just for the sake of clarity, if we're gonna send things forward, what is our, what are our parameters for what could be sent forward and how does that work? Just for community partners who may be listening and interested in whether or not they can send a new project and.
I, I mean, so I, I think I don't have anything new of outside community partners. I mean, I think that we had that initial list and I'm fine with that. If there's something else, you know, so be it. I, I think anything could be up for consideration if we if the consent, uh, majority of the Commission said so, but um I know that, I mean, from what I understand, that there's been a lot of interest in the last week or so about a Trail Rider project, which is the only new one that I've heard of. So I just want, and, and then last time, um, you know, we've had the Rodney Street trees come up.
Out of left.
Um, but, but, but something that I, I mean, we have the money right now. I think that it's worth consider, I mean, it, it's worth discussion if that's something the Commission wants to discuss. So I, I guess I would say if there's something out of left field, I would put that on your list and send it to the city manager and, and Amanda and then the Commission can discuss it. Obviously, it's just.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um. Yeah, you know, so, so if you think of the process that we've had, um, I believe it started with a pretty serious discussion of internal needs that, that the city had. And, and maybe an opportunity or two to partner with the county on certain projects. Um, and then the then we took applications externally and um, you know, those went from forty-some down to seven and, and we, we've considered those seven. Um, I don't know. In last, at last, at the last Administrative Meeting, we um, selected three of those seven.
Right.
That we felt were, we had census to move forward with. Um. You know, I'm, I'm comfortable with the three of seven that we've had, and you know, clearly we have nine hundred and some thousand left. And I don't know, I guess in a sense, we've never really had the opportunity to talk about, maybe there are things um, out of left. out of left field that we might consider. And I threw the ninety thousand for mature trees, whether that had any basis in reality or not. As far as the dollar amount goes, I think, I think that's a an issue that's come up in the last little while that it might be worth trying to use some of this money to address that issue. And I think a while back, I threw another one out of left field that was, you know, we received an email from one of our constituents that said, why don't you put some of this to solar? Solar project, for example, or projects. And we've really not had a discussion about that. But I think, I think that's certainly a fair use of one-time money that maybe we can talk about. So if there's opportunities like that, that we haven't previously considered because we had a pretty specific focus of let's take care of some of the internal needs that we've had. Let's take some applications from the community. And so I think right now it kind of makes sense that maybe we would consider some of these other ideas. So.
Any other comments from the commission? My suggestion is I think we need to sleep on this now because like you all said, left you coming through, so. I think we, I hear it. I need, I need to regroup and decide once what, so I don't know.
So don't, I don't think we're in any mad rush.
No, and I know that, but.
And and so, you know, we've been up to this point pretty deliberate and thoughtful and
And that's where I'm at.
So let's con- continue that.
Okay.
Have to offer.
Any other comments?
Mister Mayor, if I could get some clarification. So just so I'm making sure I'm hearing everyone right, the the next steps that you're proposing is that the commission would take a look at the existing proposals that they've already already submitted. And then send additional ideas to Tim and I to for for future commission meetings, is that correct?
So I think what what I said was, I hear all the ideas. I'm going to sleep on mine before I make any determination.
Yeah. And so Mayor, that's what I heard, but we will agenda ARPA again.
Yes.
And you guys can, the governing body can pick up where you've left off in terms of the discussion.
Correct. You look.
No, I think we're on the same page, Mayor. Don't worry.
Okay. At a time, do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mister Mayor, Commissioners, I do not have any public comment online.
We have any here in present. City of Helena Engineering and Design Standards, twenty twenty-two update. Engineer Clark.
Mayor, Commissioners, public updates. Before you start, I'd just like to, oh, just say a couple things, I mean. But just want to go over the these engineering updates. We did them in February. We did the admin meeting and we came down that there were three items that were kind of left out to really be discussed. One was the three inches of asphalt compared to four, which was already previously done. And the engineering standards updated to allow three. We had the K copper service lines that were coming in. We had further discussions and and through it, we were fifty fifty on allowing the the plastic pipe anyway into further discussions. We changed that to go and allow the poly pipe, so the standards will be changed to reflect that. And then we have the the twenty feet trap, the twenty foot travel lane that will make us in compliance with the fire code that we'll get back into, but just want to to sort of find out that these are combinations of four years. Back in two thousand nineteen is when we started these. We've had nine public meetings, group meetings, three stakeholder meetings where we brought every, all the engineers and developers in to look at the engineering standards after staff had already put their comments in to change it. More summarily reviewed the plans to be able to do it. So we've had a lot of review of everything that has gone on here, a lot of public comment. And from our last one with developers in the room, we came down to the three items. So that's where we just like to 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 go, just to point that out, is this has been a fairly robust public input process. So with that, I just turn it over to city engineer Jamie Clark and David.
Mayor, Commissioner, the only thing that really changed on our end since we met last is the consideration of the C nine oh one HDP pipes for water service lines and after consideration of costs and input from the public. Internal discussions, we decided to change the standards to include that. And that's the really the only change that we've had since we met last. The other two items would be on the transportation part.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
So the through public comment, the draft now represents a three-inch mat rather than the original recommended four inch. It allows for the plastic pipe versus copper. It's still then staff's recommendation that we go to a twenty-foot standard rather than an eighteen-foot standard. Which also matches up with present fire code.
Thanks for that clarification. Are are you done, man, director?
Yeah, just what Ryan said is the eighteen foot going to twenty is to match fire code so that we don't have two conflicting codes and that we're in line with each other.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and I think this is for Director Knopf, I'm not sure. So our current width is eighteen and we're suggesting, so some of our streets are eighteen. I guess what I'm trying to understand is if we have a lot that are eighteen, was that the previous code? And when did that change or i- the the genesis of the eighteen to twenty, how did we get to a place where we're out of compliance with our code if we were ostensibly building to code previously?
Mayor Commissioners, two thousand thirteen, the new, the current standards were passed. And that's when the eighteen foot or nine foot bridge travel lane for local roads was put in place. And Ryan can give some background, but from my understanding on that, there was significant discussion on going from the twenty to eighteen foot, which even back then, fire code required twenty feet. And it was staff's comments that we should stick with the twenty feet. It was changed through that discussion and adopted by the city commission to do the nine and nine, so eighteen foot. We've had city streets built to the local standard of the nine and nine. I, but I were, I I guess I'd point out that we have plenty of concerned citizens right now on those streets that were, I think, the best intention for a traffic calming feature to make the streets narrower and encourage cars to slow down. But I think an unexpected consequence of that is if the cars parking on the other side do not park exactly correctly with basically their car, their tires within a couple inches of the curb, they start encroaching on that already existing nine foot and now those lanes become narrower. And it does promote traffic calming because people slow down, but we get to the point where you can't pass two vehicles. And then it doesn't comply with fire code. So if we can't pass a, two passenger vehicles, we can't expect emergency services to be able to access those areas.
And one other point that I'd like to point out that with the development and building review, we have a conflicting standard and a code, which has caused a lot of grief and a lot of problems because you have the fire code, which is the twenty feet, which fire department fire code tries to stand to or adhere to. And then we have the standards that are the eighteen feet. So it puts us in an awkward position and it'd be much cleaner and easier if we could be able to have this, a code equal the standards, so we don't have different departments having different statements and different comments.
Go ahead, Derek, Manager Burden.
Thank you, Mayor. One further question, because I've been in conversations that when the eighteen foot was adopted, however many years ago. Was that a part of the engineering standards or was that a separate discussion and how was it, was it through a resolution or how did that work?
Mayor Commission, it was part of the engineering standards. It was the last part that we had robust conversations with everyone. And so it was only put in the engineering standards and not put in code or a resolution, anything outside of that. So it was basically a standard where you have a code that is a federally recognized code. So there was discrepancy out there.
Thank you. I'm not sure who to direct this one to either, but we did receive an email yesterday. I don't remember very recently, that appeared to have comprehensive comments. I have not yet had time to read that. But it suggested that there was a group of people reviewing the engineering standards that had additional comments. Have you had the opportunity to read, see, are there things in addition to those three items that we talked about that are being raised now?
Mayor Commission, to speak to that email specifically. We have taken a look at it and there are some minor changes, some difference of opinions that we could go back and forth on that we could have that, but then there are some very substantive changes that would require city code changes. It would take a lot of work and it'd take a lot more than just a day for us to digest and see where everything goes. And a lot of that could possibly push this back, you know, to the beginning, because I'd hate to have four people review and engineering standards, make changes without the public. All of those representatives were actually part of the beginning, the very beginning of our comments. And then we're getting them now. So I would like to go back to the whole group if if we're going to consider them. My recommendation would be, that's a great place to start with our update. Let's get these approved and go forward and then start taking those comments that we have and bring them back to commission. If it takes policy discussion changes, if it takes city code changes and then do an update. And I know ci- city engineer Jamie Clark, his recommendation is to update these every year. So that would be a good segue to go into the into the update because they are coming in fairly late in the process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you done, directors? Do we have any public comments?
Madam Clerk. Mister Mayor, I do have one hand raised online. Mark Runkel.
Yeah, would you put him through, please?
Mayor and Commissioners and staff. I had hoped not to actually speak tonight, but I think that these, that it is a good time to review the standards more and to consider, our group spent a lot of hours going completely through the standards. And we have one hundred and twenty-five comments in those. There are, some of them are meant to help streamline the process. If we, if we get standards that are more clear and don't have as many things in them such as this is the minimum that you need to do, the minimum of what's in these standards. Nobody knows what the maximum is at that point. And a number of things that need to be worked through with city staff instead of having some clarity to them. We attempted to make comments that were actually able to be acted upon. There may be a couple of things that do require more work and we tried not to do that. But there are things such as for example, fire hydrants were limited to one choice. We've always used Mueller hydrants forever and everybody in the state uses them. There are a number of things that we think are significant and make it more difficult for engineers to get things right the first time through. And for the reviewing engineers to know exactly what to do. I realize that the engineering standards get a bit tedious for people that aren't used to working with them. But I I don't really quite see, I apologize that that as a group, we didn't figure out that we really needed to go through and give comments on the entire set of engineering standards. We did go to multiple, to to at least two input sessions over the last few years. Most of our, most of our suggestions were not really incorporated in the, in the past. And so as we look through it, we feel that we've made valuable contributions to the standards and hope that you would give some consideration to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others, Madam Clerk?
Mister Mayor, Commissioners, I have no other public comment online. Oh, I spoke too soon. I apologize, Mister Mayor. I do have a hand raised from SMA Architecture and Design. If you'd please state your full name for the record.
Mister Mayor, Commissioners, Jason Davis here, one of the partners in SMA Architecture. I just, first of all, thank you for all the work. I know it can't be easy. I will admit, I'm an architect.
Sir, I'm sorry, you're breaking up.
Mister Mayor, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I guess, but you were breaking up earlier.
Sorry about that. I apologize. Again, Jason Davis here with SMA Architecture inside. I don't know, I'm not referring to what I said previously. For all the work that's going into this, I understand how much work goes into these standards. I also want to admit, as an architect, I'm way out of my health.
Sir, I'm sorry. You're breaking up. I really apologize. We're not getting it fully here.
Mister Davis, if you'd like, you could enter a written public comment into the Q and A feature. And I'd be happy to read it into the record for you.
So with that, do we have any others while we await Mister Davis's comments? Madam Clerk.
I have no other public comment online.
Okay, what are we looking for here? Consensus? Direction? Yes, Manager Burden.
Mayor, I I think that Director Leland outlined the multi-year process that this has gone through. The intent to go to an annual update. I think that the large three items that were brought forward by several people in the industry last time were the three that we outlined today. That, I think it'd be my my intent without further direction from the commission to this, but it's in the commission meeting for consideration. And if there's further discussion or amendments that need to take place, I think that would probably be the time to do it.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So when, when would you be looking at that?
I don't know right offhand. It would be within the next two to four weeks, I think, wisher.
Okay, thank you. And yes, yes.
Mister Mayor and Manager Burton, Director Leland, if, I I think given what you said that you haven't had time to fully digest the email that came in from the group, if it would be possible, maybe to circle back just for an update on having reviewed the, you know, the full set of recommendations, are there opportunities to make some changes now? And what are some, you know, it seemed like the three issues that got pulled out were resolved fairly quickly. If we could maybe take a look at that email, see if there are other suggestions that could be handled prior to an update. And then if we, if we went for the four-week time horizon, there might be some opportunities to address some of the concerns now instead of. Um, and then if we, if we went for the four-week time horizon, there might be some opportunities to address some of the concerns now instead of waiting for an update. Um, or at least to fully digest the recommendations that were made, given that they just came in. That would be my preference if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't have a problem with, with that. So I think we can, uh, like the manager said, within the next three, four, four.
Can I just one question?
The next three, four weeks, we will be looking at it to make a determination.
Um, I would concur with that approach. Um, one question I would have, and you can send an email if it's easier. Um, it would be helpful if you could give like two examples of like a street that's eighteen feet and a street that's twenty feet. Because, you know what, the street I live on, I'm gonna guess it is eighteen, but it was, it, yeah, it's pretty small, especially when there's two pickups parked on either side. One of us always has to go, you know? But um, it would just be helpful just for me to have a picture of what is an eighteen-foot and what is a twenty-foot. Um, so if we could get an, like, an exemplar of those two examples, that would be helpful.
Mayor Commission, I can definitely send that to you. The one that we had, um, have had the most comments on is Cabernet.
Okay.
Over by Knott's Hill.
Yep.
Um, particularly right by our PA's new building there. They get a lot of parking there with the, with the businesses in the area. And that's one of those, but I'll send the list of eighteen versus twenty-foot around the, the city.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you. You have any other comments? Madam Clerk, uh, you're about to read the comment into the record.
Mister Mayor, Commissioners, I apologize. I have not received any written comment at this time.
Okay, if you do, please let us know.
I will.
Okay, uh, Helena, recent sustainability efforts, Director Leland.
Um, Mayor Commission, I just wanna thank you for the opportunity to be able to present this, uh, work that we have been able to do from, there was a comment earlier about sustainability and what we have done, and this is just to give you an update. Um, and then also to introduce you to Miranda Griffith. Here's Griffith, sorry, that is our new sustainability coordinator. And then Leah Anderson, which is our pre-treatment environmental manager, that has been carrying the ball. Um, along with Ed Coleman, the deputy director, carrying the ball for sustainability. We haven't stopped since our previous, uh, several sustainability coordinators, uh, left and then a couple didn't stay long enough and we ended up, uh, adding, making their full-time positions. So we have several people working on this regardless if we have a sustainability coordinator. And that's why it kind of works in Public Works, uh, because we do have a team, uh, we do know how processes work and we don't have to pick stuff up. Um, between Leah and, and Jake Carson, we have been able to get educational stuff, uh, going. We've been able to get the legacy projects that were in place and be able to get everything taken care of. This will be a cut-down version. This is a condensed version. We have a lot more than we have out there. So bear with us. It is uh, kind of an extensive list that we have going forward.
Ten minutes.
Just letting you know, that's why I got. Schedule's still sick, so. So just wanted to be able to turn it over. And one thing with Public Works and with the city is we look at this all together. We always look at the, at sustainability, um, if it is water main breaks, uh, saving, um, saving energy, saving chemicals, um, stormwater management, I mean, everything, public outreach. We all do sustainability every single day. And then you have transportation that is out there. How can they be more fuel efficient? They're trying to stretch their budget of what they can do, finding better uh, asphalt that is out there. I mean, it is, it is ingrained in the city of Helena. So it isn't one person that is the sustainability coordinator that does. We do this all the way around and take it forward. So with that, I will just turn it over to the end. Miranda, uh, to go through some of the projects, just a little bit.
Mayor, please. Miranda, can you, can you guys talk about some of your background? I think this is the first time the City Commission has met you.
Yeah, so, um, Miranda Griffiths, I have a background in, I came here from the state of Montana for about five years. Um, so I have a background in public education, outreach, um, grant management. I never, I did not have any sustainability uh, background. So they took a chance on me. So I hope it's gonna pay out. Um, yeah. Leah Anderson, I am City of Helena's Environmental Regulation Pre-Treatment Manager. I came over from state as well. I have worked at Department of Environmental Quality as the Environmental Enforcement Specialist. I also have a background in public outreach and education and worked at, also worked at the Department of Agriculture. Um, we hired Miranda in part because of her public outreach experience. One of the biggest battles is changing hearts and minds and reaching out to people and just getting the information across to people in a way that people can actually accept it. And.
Thank you.
So we'll kick it off with water sustainability projects. The city has created several videos and snippets to inform the public about their water systems. These videos include water conservation information.
It was a really high-tech. No, the public is aware already, you know, until then we will experience. I didn't say we may.
This doesn't count even thirteen. So where we've navigated to is the City of Helena's new website. We have multiple videos and one we'll be showing you today is water treatment irrigation.
Mister Mayor, we picked the short one for you.
The, the rating group is four minutes long. And so I encourage everybody to, to go onto the website and, and take a look at those. They are very well put together. Jake Garson and um, Ben Ripley are water treatment supervisor are the ones that put those together. So continuing on, Red Mountain Bloom. The Red Mountain Bloom is a water duct that transports water from Scott Reservoir to Chesapeake Reservoir. Currently, only twenty percent of the water released from Scott Reservoir actually makes it to Chesapeake Reservoir. The City Commission recently granted ARPA funding for bloom repairs. This project will improve the quantity and quality of water that we are able to provide to the citizens of Helena and allow for better overall management of the city's water resources. The Mayor's National Water Challenge. The Mayor's National Water Conservation Challenge is a competition between cities to encourage citizens and other entities to commit to water conservation practices. It runs the entire month of April and includes an extensive outreach and education campaign. In twenty twenty-two, Helena ranked the highest out of the seven major cities in Monthea. Yeah, they moved there. Um, we are entering the challenge again in twenty twenty-three. Conservation Flyers. The city, the city distributed conservation, water conservation flyers in the utility bill inserts for June of twenty twenty-two. The flyers encouraged optimal watering times for landscapes and best watering times for the city's water treatment plants. These initiatives, when practiced, conserve energy and water. We had great participation and we will be sending out the flyers again in twenty twenty-three. Domestic sprinkler companies. In spring of twenty twenty-two, the city performed outreach to the domestic sprinkler companies in the Helena area. This outreach provided information on optimal watering times to set sprinklers based on the location of the individuals. This initiative has the potential to also conserve both water and energy and will be conducting the outreach again in twenty twenty-three. Reservoir relining and main replacement projects. Potable water loss is a significant issue for the City of Helena. Portions of the main date back to nineteen ten. The city has replaced portions of the main and relined the hail reservoir. This effort has resulted in conservation of nearly half a million gallons of water per day. Ten Mile Water Treatment Plant. Optimization of the processes at the plant has extended the time between filter flushes by forty-five hours. Filter flushes are the largest energy use at the plant. So extending the time in between filter flushes has re- has reduced the amount of energy required annually to run the plant. They've also installed metered chemical pumps. This has resulted in a forty percent reduction in chemical use. Water meters. Upgrading and replacing, up, up here and placing outdated, outdated water meters has allowed the city to more accurately measure quantities delivered to customers. And it also alerts Helena's citizens of potential leaks in their homes. This has significantly reduced, or has the potential to significantly reduce the number of basement floodings, et cetera, and damage as a result of that.
Can you, can you explain that a little more? How, how does that work?
It recognizes the differing, so if you have a, something running continuously, do you wanna touch base on this more?
Mayor, I can kind of look at it. It's the Ameri- it's the meter in your house. It basically takes and has an algorithm in there that you either use more water that we can alert you or it alerts us down at the water, um, water utility, um, division to be able to take a look and, oh, we have a lot of water that's going out there. Do we have a main break? Do we have a break in someone else's house? But then it also takes and looks, do you have continuous water flow? Does water always continuously flow? That means you have a leaky faucet. You have something, so we go and alert them and send it up to them that you have something leaking in your house, that you should take a look at it. And it wasn't on purpose? Did you leave it on because you have thirty-five below weather and you needed to leave something on? Or do you have a running, um, bathroom that may be in a basement that you don't know about? So those are the type of instruments that we have and with our new meters, we can even get more and more or smarter meters to be able to give more information out to everyone that is out there. So.
Thank you. Yeah, Mayor, I might just add, put in a plug, uh, on their website, they have a, a pretty, um, detailed guide for your water meter and in, in reading it, you can, you can tell pretty much for yourself with, whether you have a leak or not. So.
There's a water drip, a little flashing on it to cut it all down. You can go and look.
You go take a look. If there's a little flashing water droplet, means you have a leak somewhere. Or the meters leak.
Continuing on, zero escaping. This project was done in conjunction with the Citizen Conservation Week. Phase one, including site prep and initial planting of the city's first zero escaping landscape, was completed at the Holland Justice Center in the summer of twenty twenty-two. In the spring of twenty twenty-three, the city will perform an analysis of the site to determine plant mortality. And in the summer of twenty twenty-three, informational signage will be installed and the site will, will be evaluated for potential expansion. Lead service line replacement. The lead service line replacement program is a requirement of DEQ and EPA. Were required to inventory, remove and replace all public and privately owned lead and lead contaminated galvanized water service lines. Our initial inventory identified one lead service line and seven hundred and seventy potential contaminated galvanized service lines or service lines of unknown materials. DEQ has earmarked, earmarked approximately eight million dollars in funding for the City of Helena to conduct this project.
All right, solid waste sustainability project. Quick question, sorry, thank you. Um, before we move to the next category, do we have, I know we talked about previous climate goals, et cetera. Do we have a goal that we're working towards with water in each of these sections? Is there some?
Yes, so the previous, the two thousand and nine Climate Action Plan set a goal of one hundred gallons per person per day. When you have extensive leaks in the system, it's difficult to assess the amount that individuals are, are actually losing. And so this will help us.
The meter will help, that's.
The, yeah, the meters will help, um, replacing the service lines will help. Um, the, also with the meters, it will allow us to distinguish residential from commercial and get a better estimate for the basement outfit.
I'm sorry, just, just to clarify, so all of our water projects work towards that one goal or do we have other water goals?
That is the only water goal that the city has set out there is in the two thousand and nine. They not have one in resolution.
Mayor. Yes, I would just, this is a good example, even with the two thousand and nine Climate Action Plan. I'm wanting, we need to proceed with the sustainability plan and update all of these benchmarks.
Mayor, question, just to put it in perspective, we're at about a hundred and twelve gallons per day per person. So we're just a little bit over, but just to put that in perspective.
Thank you. Solid waste sustainability projects. Um, so in twenty twenty-one, the City Commission adopted Resolution two zero six four three, which gave the city a goal to reduce its solid waste by fifty percent by twenty twenty-four with an interim target of thirty-five percent by twenty thirty. Uh, currently, the city's diversion percentage is twenty-six percent. Um, and with the adoption of this resolution, it also called for a strategic plan for waste reduction. Um, and that was completed in June of twenty twenty-two. And we were in our sixty thousand dollar budget. Um, during the design phase of this, various public meetings, outreach events, uh, and citizen surveys were conducted. Uh, in partnership with Lewis and Clark County, the city is currently working through an integrated solid waste master plan. The goal of this is to improve solid waste diversion through the city and county. And this is projected to be completed in twenty, spring of twenty twenty-four. Um, the recycling website, along with all city, other, other city websites, uh, was updated recently. And we'll share that. Um, this gives information on uh, where, what, how to recycle. Um, and then we also did recycling videos on our two most contaminated uh, commodities in order to reduce that contamination.
Most of our recycling is simple, but there are a few common mistakes that can ruin an entire load. See this number right here in this triangle on the bottom of this bottle? The only numbers we can accept right now are one and two. We also cannot take black plastic or anything else that isn't one or two, which can be confusing because often the black is labeled as number one or number two. And this packing material is labeled as number one, but not accepted. Also, tennis ball containers aren't allowed unless the metal band is removed. When you throw anything in besides one and two, it can ruin an entire load. Then we may have to just take it to the lift though. None of us want that. Just remember, recycling isn't hard, but doing it correctly takes all of us. It only takes one person doing it wrong to ruin the efforts of many others. If you have questions, please call us at four zero six four four seven eight zero eight six.
All right, um, the city also has a public relations consultant, a contract with a public relations consultant to help with other public outreach events, such as our annual latex paint exchange. Um, we hold two events annually and we get typically anywhere between five hundred and seven hundred cans of paint each time. Uh, our next one is scheduled for April with the drop-off being April fourteen through the twenty-first and pickup being April twenty-third through the twenty-ninth. Um, and we decided to schedule this to coincide with the vigilante parade. Another annual event that we do is our household hazardous waste disposal event. Um, and we do this in order to reduce harmful chemicals from being dumped illegally. Uh, and in twenty twenty-two, we had seventy participants. Um, right now, we have a partnership with MSU. So previously, our glass was being crushed and sent to Ash Grove Cement Company and they were re- reusing it. Um, they were reusing it. Uh, however, because of contamination from plastic flow regulators, Ash Grove quit accepting it. So now we currently ship our glass to Salt Lake and it is very expensive, about thirty thousand dollars a year for the city to do that. Um, so these MSU students we're working with are looking at alternatives, uh, how to recycle this glass, how to reduce contamination. Through the bipartisan infrastructure law, the city applied for about three point six million dollars in February of this year. Uh, we applied for two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars in grants for the recycling and education REO, uh, through EPA. And then three million. And then three million, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars uh through solid waste infrastructure and recycling. And we are set to hear if we got those grants in summer of this year. Um we do like to note that recycling is recycling operations are made of are made possible through our cooperative agreement with Lewis and Clark County. Now Lewis and Clark County pays for about half of the recycling budget. This includes our drop-off locations, transfer station and all the outreach events and additional recycling events that we do. Uh the city currently has six drop or recycling drop-off locations, including the transfer station throughout the Helena area. We recently secured our seventh location thanks to Kim Smith. This is going to be at the former Valley Excavation Gravel Pit off McHugh Drive. Uh and we are still looking for an eighth location. Uh each drop-off location receives about one hundred to one hundred and sixty-five tons of recycling each year, so it's our biggest one. Um and then we have, we currently have a contract with Helena Curbside Recycling. We just renewed that through January of twenty twenty-five. Citizens can opt into this service and have their recycling picked up right at their residence. Uh it costs about sixteen twenty a month and the city does subsidize eight dollars and twenty cents of that uh to reduce the cost to citizens. It is paid through the residential solid waste fees, yes.
And you may not know this, but do you know how many uh subscribers we have right now?
I think right now it's about five fifteen hundred and forty-one. I don't, it's it's in the fifteen hundreds somewhere. I'm not exactly sure what the number is, but yeah. Um and curbside recycling in the year of twenty twenty-two, we received about, well, we didn't, uh but we diverted about three hundred and sixty tons of recycling.
How is that? And I'm sorry, um with the uh, you know, with all of this public awareness. Are we including that into our public awareness campaign? I mean, in terms of that curve side, because I think it's been at that subscriber limit for a bit now.
I mean, we do promote it on the websites.
Mayor mentioned, yes, as part of our outreach and do that, we do promote that, we do have curbside recycling. And there are a couple of composting uh companies that are taking limited amount of compost. Um but yes, it is, and it is just uh it is growing and we can give you those exact diversion rates and stuff, but it is constantly growing and has been consistent through the through the years. It kind of leveled off as everything did after COVID. We had a spike and then leveled off, but it is growing and we do.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, come in. Um and it is in the contract that the Helena Recycling is supposed to provide their own advertising. And they're supposed, they're a private entity, so they're supposed to be the one where they're.
Yeah, but I'm sure we've got a little corner in on our website. We can also, you know, promote, so. Yes, it's mayor, I would just add, you hold me to the numbers, will you? But I was at the county when we cited an open siting, which is the the county landfill. At the time that we opened the landfill, it had a projected life cycle of eighty years. And that was well over twenty years ago. Today, we're looking at a life cycle of Siede at a hundred years.
Just over a hundred years.
Just over a hundred years, so the life cycle now is longer than when we first opened it up. Due to best management practices and diversion of solid waste. I think that that's pretty excellent performance on both the county and the city on extending the life of that facility. Thank you.
Waste water sustainability projects. Commercial septic pumpers. The city of Helena is able to allow commercial septic pumpers to dispose of septic waste directly into our wastewater treatment plants. This is a significant benefit to the environment and the public. Because improper land application of septicage can lead to surface water pollution, groundwater pollution, odors and spread disease vectors. Commercial septic pumpers across the state are having significant issues finding land application sites to dispose of their septicage. And many city-owned water wastewater treatment plants are unable to accept the waste. Blighed County is currently pursuing building an entirely separate treatment plant for their septicage at a cost of around fifteen million dollars. Water cycle video. The city's wastewater wastewater permit allows treated wastewater to be discharged to Perkly Perk Creek. Helena discharges approximately three million gallons of water per day into Perkly Perk Creek. This provides additional water for year-round fisheries habitat, recreation and agricultural use. In fall of twenty twenty-two, we created an informational video called Our Water Cycle. This video provides information on how the city's water and wastewater systems benefit the environment.
Water we use is part of a long process that benefits from it supports our natural water supply. The primary water source for Helena is the Ten Mile Creek drainage, where rain and snow were captured, treated and released throughout the year. The secondary source for the city is the Missouri River, which is also treated to support peak water demand throughout the summer. After being used by homes and businesses, it flows to Helena's wastewater treatment plant, a critical part of the city's infrastructure system. The plant processes everything that drains down sinks, bathtubs or is flushed down the toilet. And as you can imagine, it's not just water. The process of transforming water from dirty to clean begins by filtering out things that shouldn't be in the system in the first place. Like garbage, money, clothes or other solids are separated from the water. It goes through a long digestion process to kill bacteria and other germs. Making the waste a sought-after fertilizer. This fertilizer is used to make compost at the Lewis Clark County landfill and to fertilize local crops. Additional nutrients and waste products are removed as the water continues through the process. It is aerated and treated with an ultraviolet treatment system before it is released to Perkly Perk Creek, where it provides water for crops, efficient wildlife habitat and recreation. Testing and reporting are a critical part of the Helena wastewater treatment plant operation. Plant operators regularly run tests to ensure the treated water meets strict water quality standards. Testing is also conducted in Perkly Perk Creek to ensure that discharged water is having minimal impact on the creek. Thanks to this lengthy process, the positive impact of Helena's water system can be seen for miles outside the city limits. Without city water, Perkly Perk Creek would likely go dry during the late summer months. Instead, the Helena wastewater treatment plant provides three billion gallons of water to the creek each day, allowing Perkly Perk to flow year-round. While much of the water eventually reaches Lake Helena, it provides lots of additional benefits along the way. Farmers and ranchers use it to irrigate crops and as drinking water for livestock. At the same time, recreationists enjoy the trails and fishing access along Perkly Perk Creek. So next time you use water in Helena, don't forget where it came from or where it's going. The city of Helena Water is part of a much larger story, helping people that are interested in the valley.
Let me keep clicking right along. Um methane boiler maintenance. The city of Helena's wastewater treatment plant has a methane boiler. This boiler uses methane generated at the facility to heat the digester at the facility. Due to the highly corrosive nature of the methane produced, piping, maintenance and replacement must be performed. Plans to utilize seventy-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars from the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant for the project. Waste water treatment plant optimization. The city of Helena plans to continue planned optimization efforts. We're currently reviewing the feasibility of basing out the current blowers with more energy-efficient turbo blowers. The current blower is a two hundred horsepower Spencer and uses approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of electricity per year. The turbo blowers are more efficient and can save approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars for electric speed period. The city is also performing tests on new mixers. Each new mixer has the potential to save about eleven hundred dollars of electricity per year. There are eighteen mixers for potential savings of close to twenty thousand dollars per year. Waste water master plan. The city of Helena's wastewater treatment plant is currently experiencing legislative and regulatory permitting uncertainties. In response, the city is conducting a wastewater master plan. And we're reviewing additional nutrient removal capabilities of the plant. We're looking at ways to improve the water quality in Perkly Perk Creek. And in the summer of twenty twenty-two, we executed a sampling and analysis plan for Perkly Perk Creek. The sampling plan was designed to obtain additional data on the effects of the city's wastewater treatment plants, on the stream's overall health. And help identify additional sources of nutrients and their effects on the stream. Results of the study are still being compiled.
Mayor, thank you. Uh thank you very much for this presentation. I received a presentation yesterday from uh Montana Business Assistance Connection Impact regarding the wastewater from the brewery down in Three Forks. And it's my understanding that the water that's shipped from there is treated at our water treatment plant. And it's actually helping the digesters be more efficient. Can you explain or talk more about that?
So it has to do with the increase in V O E, um our budgets really like it. And it has helped us have some of our lowest phosphorus numbers that we've experienced. If you want more in-depth, Ryan, you can expand.
And Mayor Commission, and with the wastewater master plan is that we are looking at how we can use different operations and maybe in the city to be able to put it in different parts of the plant to maybe produce more methane, to be able to heat, to look at using electricity. There's a lot of different options. Yeah, but we are taking that waste from down in Three Forks that is being used and it's actually been a benefit. We still charge him for it, but it's a benefit. Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you for the explanation.
Energy sustainability. The city of Helena has electric vehicle charging stations. The city will be installing two level-two electric vehicle charging stations. One at the Bill Roberts Golf Course and one at the Jackson Street Parking Garage. This legacy project faced many challenges, including ADA compliance, electrical availability, site electrical capabilities, material and equipment availability, increased material and labor costs and absence of timely contracting. Work at the Jackson Street Parking Garage began in late fall of twenty twenty-two. With complete installation estimated for the spring of twenty twenty-three. Installation of Bill Roberts Golf Course is estimated to begin and be completed in the spring of twenty twenty-three. The project received a seventeen thousand dollar grant from DEQ. And it potentially qualifies for at least an additional fifty percent direct pay incentive through the Inflation Reduction Act. Official permission approval and acceptance of the DEQ grant will be presented to submissions. The city of Helena's transportation solar project. The city's first solar project was a three point five two kilowatt project installed at the wastewater treatment plant in two thousand and nine. The solar panel project at the transportation shop is a fifty kilowatt net meter project. This legacy project has also faced many challenges, including structural integrity of the roof, delayed implementation of the required bit of the pyramid process, net metering application issues, unforeseen project issues and increased material and labor costs. As a result, the project was redesigned and will be a ground-mounted project along the northeast side of the property instead of a roof-mounted solar project. The prep work at the site has been completed. And project installation and final project completion is estimated for the spring of twenty twenty-three. The project received a fifty thousand dollar grant from Northwestern Energy's Universal System Benefits Program. And potentially qualifies for a thirty percent direct pay incentive through the Inflation Reduction Act. Sustainability Evaluation and Plan. Many of the challenges encountered in the electric vehicle charging station project and transportation shop's solar project could have been avoided if due diligence had been performed prior to the start of each project. Pursuing a sustainability evaluation and plan be conducted to identify, evaluate and document future city projects, including each project's net environmental gain and feasibility. The plan also includes an evaluation of city facilities for sustainability projects such as insulation efficiencies, electrical capabilities, potential for solar panel installation, potential for electric vehicle charging station installation, water conservation, equipment upgrades, et cetera. This evaluation will allow for planning, budgeting, pursuit of grant funding, coordination between departments and creation of a cohesive sustainability-based capital improvement plan.
And Mayor, you said that was what Mayor or City Manager was talking about is how we can get the plans or get new goals and update from the two thousand and nine plan, so that will all be incorporated in what will be presented or proposed during the budget process.
Green Terror. This is a partnership that the city of Helena entered into with Missoula County, the city of Missoula, and the city of both. This was a project to work with Northwestern Energy to provide an option of clean electricity to Montana cities at an adjusted energy rate. In March of twenty twenty-one, the parties entered into a one hundred thousand dollar contract with Energy Solutions to support the developments of a renewable rate auction with Northwestern Energy. The project is ongoing and the next quarterly meeting is scheduled for April of twenty twenty-three. Steam boiler replacement. The city will be replacing two fifty-plus-year-old steam boilers for at the Law and Justice Center. Current boilers have a fifty-six to sixty percent thermal cycle efficiency. They will be replaced with four new smaller hot water boilers with a ninety-seven percent combustion and thermal efficiency at considerable energy. Citywide LED light installation. This project started with replacement of incandescent lighting with fluorescent lighting. And now is fluorescent lighting being replaced with LED lighting. Upgrades to the lighting of the civic center and main fire station are complete. Upgrades of the Ten Mile Water Treatment Plant are continuing. And upgrades are in progress on the first floor of the city town building. Electric street sweeper. The transportation department was.
Why are you laughing like that? Smiling.
The transportation.
Wait, literally released up to our streets.
The transportation department was awarded a fifty thousand dollar grant through DEQ's Clean Truck Bus and Airporting Equipment Program. Funding, sorry, five hundred thousand.
Oh, good.
Um.
We wish.
Yeah. Funding utilized to per- funding was utilized to purchase an electric street sweeper. It will be replacing and decommissioning a thirteen-year-old diesel-powered street sweeper. The project may also qualify for an additional forty thousand dollar direct pay incentive through the Inflation Reduction Act. Chessman Reservoir Irrators. Formerly, the city had to add significant amounts of copper sulfate sulfate to chessman reservoir to inhibit algae growth and maintain water quality. The city now utilizes three floating air raiders. The air raiders are solar-powered and have completely eliminated the need for the city to add copper sulfate to the reservoir. Solar revolving loan program. The city's solar revolving loan program started in two thousand and sixteen. And the program has provided nearly five hundred and thirty thousand dollars in revolving funds to residents. It has assisted forty-eight residences with loans to install solar projects. Waste oil burners.
Uh excuse me. What's the criteria to get on that program? So because I can't understand why more and more people not getting on that program.
It's tapped out currently.
Stopped up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um which have been fairly typical. Um when funding is available, it is, it seems to be utilized. So because it's a revolving loan program, as the funds are replenished, as people pay back their loans, and then those ones become available, people are taking advantage of it.
People are taking. Yeah.
You'll recall that was on my list for last article meeting.
Oh, I heard. Okay, thank you.
Waste oil burners. The city has waste oil burners that are used to provide heat during winter months in lieu of electric or natural gas at some of the city facilities. The waste oil is collected from citizens at the transfer station and during city maintenance. Expansion of capabilities to store additional used oil has allowed the city to reuse a low-cost, locally sourced resource for facility heat. This set this saves the city, saves the city the cost of having to pay an entity to dispose of the used oil that is collected at the transfer station. And also has large potential energy savings by utilizing waste oil. One gallon of waste oil is equivalent to approximately four dollars and eighty-eight cents of electricity. In twenty twenty-two, the city received approximately thirty-six point one tons of waste oil at the transfer station. This had the potential to conserve nearly forty-seven thousand dollars in electricity used for heating. The city is reviewing options to further expand current waste oil storage capabilities at its facilities.
That is awesome. I'm sorry, that's that's awesome. I like to hear that. So how can you transfer it to uh to homes?
Right.
Right. I mean, you know, that's really good.
All right, sustainability program projects. So recently, the website was updated uh to highlight all the sustainability projects that the city is doing. Um and also to give progress on the two thousand and nine Climate Action Plan. Something new that we are trying is the Sustainability Spotlight. We are reaching out to citizens and businesses uh to recognize any sustainability efforts that they. Uh, to recognize any sustainability efforts that they are doing in their homes or businesses. Um, the. The. The C C B, the Citizens Conservation Board, um, is we, I'm the liaison for the C C B, yeah. Um, the annual sustainability report has also been posted to the website, uh, the, the, the twenty twenty-one report. Uh, and it just gives information on all the sustainability projects that we've done for the previous year. Uh, the airport resiliency study, the city is going to be participating as a stakeholder in the airport. Helena Regional Airport Resiliency Study, where the airport authority is looking at evaluating different alternatives. For generating power at the airport. Um, the Superfund Site Reclamation, the Ten Mile Drainage Area is home to the Upper Ten Mile Superfund Site. This is a fifty-three square mile area that includes about a hundred and fifty active and abandoned mines. Mining for gold, lead, copper, and zinc began in the eighteen seventies and continued through the nineteen thirties. In two thousand two, EPA identified what was necessary to address the sources of pollution in the upper ten mile. This included excavation, disposal, and reclamation of the mine waste. Um, the city has been, has been coordinating with and requested that EPA and DEQ. Address these issues and thanks to the city's regular communications, remediation of this area is scheduled to begin in summer of twenty twenty-three. And finally, the city of Helena effectively operates a stormwater management plan.
Thank you. Um, so question from the commission.
Well, Mr. Mayor, um, thank you. This is awesome. I don't think we've ever gotten. This comprehensive of, of report and I really appreciate it, um. And also excited for us to maybe be pursuing that sustainability plan, um, so that we can. Make a more strategic, uh. Path forward, um, so that it doesn't, I think part of it is just. Education and that it happens in so many different places all the time. That unless you're a member of the public, it's maybe paying very close attention to all of these things, you wouldn't know. Um, but really excited about. All of our potential moving forward to and building off of this and welcome. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for your presentation today. Uh, I, this is my first time receiving this as well. And I really appreciate the work that went into this from your whole team. Thank you very much for presenting this as well. Um, I'm, I'm curious about the PR consultant that you're working with. And I think it's important with the list of things that were up here, a lot of it's new to us, but also too, it's new to us, it'll be new to the public. So tell, telling our story and telling your story, um, to show that we're working. Towards a sustainability or more sustainable, uh, city government, but. I'd like to know more about the PR firm that you're working with and what your thoughts are there.
Sure, uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, um. We are working with, uh, Jenny Garson, who is the former, or excuse me, former PIO for the county. Um, and she, we try to go to, uh, Jake first. And then if where he needs help, we bring in the consultant. She's helped us make. Many of those videos that you saw there today doing content and then some of the filming. Um, and we have currently have a meeting tomorrow to go over a laundry list of ideas for outreach and education. Um, to get and get her assistance, including one of the ideas is since we were looking for a, uh. A new site for recycling, uh, um, what we're gonna do is. At least the initial concept was to build a poster like that shows. All where all the current recycling sites are. And then with special thanks to those entities that let us have our, our recycling sites there. Cause it's messy. There are people coming in and out. There's big trucks. Um, and, uh, so, and that we're looking for another. So that's just one idea of, of an avenue that we're pursuing with the consultant. Right, I don't know.
With recycling, just wanted to add, we are not paying for any of those sites. They're letting us do it for free. And then since we're talking about recycling, I'm gonna take this, uh, opportunity, please. Has anyone filled out their survey or has everyone filled out their survey that is for the integrated solid waste?
Yeah, good job. How many have you received back so far?
Uh, we're, what, um, you don't, you gotta reset that thing.
Last week, it was even.
It ended.
Oh, wow.
Eight hundred people.
At the end of last week.
So I think it's actually double from our city county.
That's fantastic. That's great.
But we need more.
We want to get that survey again. We want to get around two thousand, so we need to double it again, but this is, we're getting a very good, um. Very good, um. We are. Participation. Thank you. Yeah, you done, Meredith?
Is it concerning that?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, thank you and thank both, or thank you all for your presentation. Um, really helped me to understand. The successes that we've had as a municipality and, and the ongoing work in the future. Um, on the water sustainability, I figure you threw out about the Red Mountain Bloom. The amount that go gets from Scott to Jessman. Did it say that again?
Twenty percent.
Okay, thank you. I was pretty sure that's what you said. And then to Mr. Burton's, um. Comment about S I D. And it's. Life. If I remember right, and this might be from Mr. Leland, when we took our tour last fall. Understand correctly, there's another S I D out there. Another hundred and sixty acres that the county owns in addition that. Exists that maybe people don't really understand is out there, so.
Mayor Commission, yes, we have another. And when we say we, we include the county because we have three in our local agreements that we work with. We are currently managing the landfill for them, so we have that. But yes, there is another hundred and sixty acres that has not been cited yet, so it isn't underneath our permit. So for us to say that it's cited, we kind of leave that off, but yes, we have. Substantial amount of land to be able to, to use, so. Above that hundred years, there's even more, and as we divert and get better technology. I suspect this hundred years will grow and continue to grow without beating up things.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. And, uh, you know, you guys are doing great work. Thank you for that. But I think we still need to, uh, you know, publicize that because. Come on now, we're here and some of this thing is just like, I opened up for some of those. We've never heard of it. So if I haven't heard about it, think about the public. You're working, but I don't know.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor, I, uh, hear you a hundred percent. We're now staffed up.
Okay.
We have the ability, uh, a lot of the work has been done and I think it's really top-notch professional stuff. Uh, and that the outreach plan has been developed and will continue to be developed. And then I also think for, as I've mentioned. I think it's real important, uh, the consideration for the commission to fund a sustainability plan. Will also further define that outreach moving forward. Uh, and, uh, we've got. More than one staff person of which two have outreach and education experience on purpose. Uh, so I think that will help in that effort as well. And the turnover. Uh, I think we have stabilized our staffing, uh, and I think the opportunities are incredible.
And then I would challenge the commission. We all have those Twitters and Facebook and Instagram. Stop posting, guys. Start sharing.
Check out my page.
Okay. So, yeah, that's all I have to say. Go ahead.
Just last, I think that I just realized, uh, I looked up and realized I think we might have missed one thing and that was. Um, our HPD vehicles, which are hybrids. Um, and I don't think that was included in you.
Mayor Commission, this was a condensed version.
Okay.
We could go down.
No, 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 no.
We can talk about hybrid vehicles. We can talk about the electric vehicle stations. We can talk about the sand that's being recycled, so. This was just the top highlighted one. We could continue on for.
And we appreciate that.
Mr. Here, I, one question, um. So I got a tour of the airport today and you mentioned the airport. What, what's, what work is being done there or encouraged to be done there?
Uh, you want? Mayor, Commissioner, is they've got a grant to be one of the pilot projects within the, uh, nation. For their airport to look at sustainability. How can they be, uh, it's not, it was resiliency, not sustainability, it's resiliency of what can they do? So they can keep power on and keep operating in times of emergency, times of natural disasters, stuff like that. So they have a team that was came in funded by a grant and they are looking at saving energy. Solar panels, they're looking at being able to cover a solar panel or cover their parking lot to be doing solar panels. They're looking in at tapping into the, um, high-pressure gas line to be able, that is coming from a petroleum line from. A Yellowstone pipeline, tapping into that to be able to use that to generate electricity. And so it's just going on and on and on of stuff that they can do, but this was one of a few grants. Because they performed on different grants and were, um. Were looked at as a A-class type, uh, airport, um, because of the work that they've done on these other grants. They were able to receive this as a pilot project to one of the few in the nation.
Any comments from the commission? Ben and Clark, is there any public comments on this topic? Are there any public comments there?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple online. Uh, first, I'll, uh. Open the mic for Ian Lund, uh, to speak.
Okay, we'll start with the ones here. Go ahead. We're starting with you.
Sure. Sorry, Ian, to go ahead of him, but, um, hello, good afternoon, everyone. McKenna Sellers, Executive Director for Montana Renewable Energy Association. Um, wanted to thank and also say it's great to meet Miranda and Leah and thank you for the really comprehensive presentation. Um, M R A is a nonprofit. We do work statewide on renewable education, industry engagement, and advocacy. At the Public Service Commission and at the Legislature, so, um, the mention of energy sustainability, that's really our wheelhouse, um. And we're really encouraged to hear about the updated sustainability plan talk, um, that has certainly been a theme throughout this meeting. Um, thank you to Manager, Director, Manager Burton and the Commission here. So, um, I've got cards and a little brochures of information after this meeting if anyone would like to come and say hello, but thanks for the opportunity to be here.
You bet. Thank you. I'm clerk.
Oh, jeez, Mr. Mayor, I do have Ian Lund online.
You have the floor, Mr. Lund.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my name is Ian Lund. I'm with Montana Environmental Information Center. I'm their Energy Policy Director. Um, and I just want, I guess I had a couple of questions for the department and, um. Uh, so, so I guess as you're developing the new sustainability plan, um. I, I see there's a lot of projects. There's some solar projects, um, that's great. I, I guess I just didn't really hear a lot of emphasis on. Stuff being done other than solar projects to address, um, climate change and Helena's carbon budget. I, I guess I'm wondering what the department is doing to track, um, progress towards a hundred percent. Clean electricity goal, um, what they're doing to track sort of what, how progress is being made. Um, you know, with these projects towards that a hundred percent goal. And if that's something they're doing, and if it's not something they're doing, if that's something that's gonna be part of the new sustainability plan going forward.
Thank you. No. Do you have any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I do have one written comment. I'll read into the record.
Please.
Uh, Sydney Dickinson. What are the sustainability efforts happening in regards to food waste or composting? And that is all the public comment I have online.
Thank you.
I wonder if maybe it might be possible. If these people have these questions, if maybe we could get maybe a written, um, summary from Leah and. Um, or I guess it might be the ones to do it. Altogether, but answering some of those questions and then we can report out at a future meeting or, or post it online.
You can post on the website if there anything, you know. Yeah, that'll give the site some traction also. Okay, this time, is there anybody from the public wishes to address the commission on anything? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I have no public comment online.
Any final comments from the commission?